Good evening, it's 6:02. Meeting on the nineteenth. Sorry, first we have for our public hearing. So, public hearing number one. Public hearing on the proposed local law to update the city code, chapter eleven. Vehicles and traffic to reflect two-way main street patterns. Anybody here to speak to that? Order here.
I think it's all one hand.
Yeah, yeah.
This is regarding an update to the city code, chapter vehicles and traffic to reflect two-way main street traffic pattern.
Sorry, no, she just wanted to sign in first. Did you want us?
Which?
I want to see that.
Yes. Which you want to speak to as a public hearing?
Yes. Oh, you did, okay. So there was a sign up sheet.
There was a sign up sheet.
But the traffic, they want to speak to the traffic. For both law and law.
Above the law, yes.
There's four. So that's like. They have the traffic and patterns, public order.
I'm speaking in general.
Okay, that'll be. Well, that'll be later. Okay, to the floor. So again, public hearing number one. Public hearing on the proposed local law to update city code, chapter eleven, vehicles and traffic to reflect two-way main street patterns. Last fall, public hearing on the proposed local law to update city code, chapter eleven, vehicles and traffic to reflect two-way main street traffic patterns. They will close that public hearing. Public hearing number two. Public hearing on proposed local law related to public order. And I have first on the list, Gigi Patterson.
Hi, I want to thank the common council and Mayor Steve. I'm Gigi Peterson. And I want to recognize the efforts to improve things in the community, including public order, but I am really troubled by the process and many aspects of the proposed changes to the code. And I think a lot of other people may speak to some of the issues. First of all, with the process, this is a public hearing on a super important matter, and it was extremely difficult to find information. I checked the city website. And the agenda for the meeting was only posted on Friday. The attachments showed up sometime after yesterday, early yesterday. And so in order to access information about these important issues, you know, many of us residents were in the dark. So I think that's a concern. And then talking with my ninety-two-year-old neighbor who's not online, she said, how am I supposed to be represented? How am I supposed to make my voice heard? And these are really, really important issues. Secondly, there are many sections of the proposal that I think ought to raise troubling questions. And I think people who maybe have more expertise in legal matters can speak to some of this. But there is considerable language that is ambiguous or subjective, including some language that endures from the old code, but other things that kind of define nuisance or other problems in ambiguous ways. And some sections seem especially pointed at certain populations, perhaps in a discriminatory way. My concerns are many, but one concern is that there are aspects of this could, that could be setting the city up for lawsuits over civil liberties. And I think there are some sections of the proposed code that kind of signal an awareness of that. There's a section about immunity from damages, a section about separability. I'm no legal expert, but it seems to me like there's some awareness there could be problems with enforcing some aspects of the code. And I was struck by one section that was on in the public nuisance abatement and the list of actions that earn people points and could cause them to have, I guess, a public nuisance citation. And I was struck by the fact that it said that there didn't have to be a court finding of their guilt, but the city shall, instead, the city shall prove. And I thought, well, what does that mean? Like, who is the city? How does the city prove? So I feel like there are a lot of questions that require sophisticated analysis and attention to parts of the code. And with the little time for public information, even about what tonight's meeting was about, at least in visiting the city website, I, I hope no dissuading decisions are made tonight because it seems to me that this deserves a lot more discussion. Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Bo Harbin. I live at twenty-five West Court Street. So I wanted to dig into some of the specifics here for the proposed changes for public order. I think Professor Peterson gave a great overview. So I just want to look at some specific items to bring your attention and ask some questions. Article two of the proposed changes, you talk about skateboards. Why not e-skateboards? You seem to call out e-bikes when you're talking about bicycles, but you don't call out the difference between skateboards. Why don't you require registration? You're requiring it for bicycles but not skateboards when you're prohibiting both on public conveyance? Seems to be a misunderstanding of our ability to travel. Speaking of article number four, obscene material, is this a Moms for Liberty backdoor attempt to go after a public library? And materials there that you consider obscene, but others do not? What is our community standard? What is defined as obscene? This law does not follow the three-pronged federal guidelines that are used to help determine if something is considered obscene, a test of which is an established Supreme Court precedence. And in fact, this change to the law gives two people, Corporation Council and the mayor, sole discretion in the city of Portland to define what they believe to be obscene. Common council doesn't get to overrule that, and the public doesn't get to have any say. So it's up to their opinion alone as to what is considered obscene, be it in the library, be it at a shop, wherever it may be, they have that discretion. Um, further on, throughout this law change, I also would draw your attention to the fact that we have not been particularly inclusive in our language. For example, in section two oh eight twenty-one, for which he has set the last confined or committed when talking about the chief of police. Two oh eight twenty-two, as he shall deem fit. Let's get with the twenty-first century when we're actually updating our laws. When we move on to, for example, public places in the nuance of unnecessary noises, if you actually look at two oh eight dash forty-two, and you follow common punctuation standards, what you've written here actually doesn't mean what you think it does. It actually provides you with the ability to ring any bell that you want for any purpose whatsoever. So you might want to clean this language up. Into eight forty-three, are we actually working to limit free speech and assembly with your provisions there? Same with article six on sound devices. Are we limiting the freedom of people to protest? And make their points known? If you look at article seven on graffiti, no Sharpies for students anymore? Is that what we're intending to have happen with this provision? That we can actually sell Sharpies to kids in high school or beyond because they might use that for graffiti? What about the responsibilities of the property owners and the fact that maybe I've decided that that graffiti is something that I actually think is a mural, but the code enforcement officer is now going to make me change my property? Because it's their determination? I think there's a lot that we need to look at in a lot of these laws. And the last one I want to draw your attention to is article nine, section two oh eight eighty-one, under public nuisance subsection two, article twenty-two of penal code cannabis, six points. We don't define actually what points in here you're looking at as specific violations because, remember, cannabis is actually legal here in New York State. If there are specific things that you want to include as a public nuisance, you really should list the subsections in here and not just make it a broad attempt to try to penalize cannabis, which is legal in New York State. And there are others that I know my time has expired, but I do think all of these provisions need to go back with the fine to comb and actually look at them to try to do what you intend them to do as opposed to what the you've actually written here tonight. Thank you.
Diane Chu.
Is it possible to get a mic to call? Thanks so much. Thank you, Mayor and Council. Much of this law appears to be a gross overreach of the city government and an overt attempt to infringe upon the First Amendment rights. Specifically, the public's rights to freedom of assembly, freedom of speech, and then right to retrace. Article three, registration and identification of parolees. The fears of recidivism are overblown. Disordinance unfairly targets the formerly incarcerated. Parolees are already obligated to regularly report to law enforcement parole officers. This is burdensome, bureaucratic overreach, and unnecessary. Article five, unnecessary and unusual noises. The proposed local law reads in part, quote, "It shall be unlawful for any person to ring any handbell." Ever heard of the Salvation Army at Christmas? Beat or strike any pan, pail, or other article? I used a drum and shaker at the indivisible rally this last weekend. Or blow any whistle or horn? Attend a Portland High football game or something? Upon any such street or place in the city of Portland? This is ridiculous. Tribulus code and despotic move, a frivolous code and despotic move by the city administration to silence the public. There are noise ordinances already on the books. Enforce them if you like, but don't trample on my rights to peaceful freedom of expression. Article seven, graffiti. The proposed local law reads in part, quote, "No person shall carry an aerosol-sprayed paint can, broad-tipped indelible marker, or etching acid into any public building or other public facility with the intent of violating the provisions." Setting aside the fact that it's always difficult to prove one's intent, this law is absurd on its face. If enacted, it would be illegal for me to carry a Sharpie pen in my purse and carry it into City Hall to pay my water bill. This is crazy beyond belief. In addition, the law is prohibiting even the sale of markers to students. The proposed local law reads in part, I'm going to keep on reading, that was somebody's timer. No person shall sell or offer to sell an aerosol-spray can, broad-tipped indelible marker, or etching acid to any person under eighteen years of age. It shall be the duty of any person or entity who sells or offers for sale any container described in subsection A, or any person desiring to purchase such container. Identification and proof of such person's age. Really? You're going to ID a person before they buy a broad-tipped Sharpie? This is beyond stupid, very poorly written. Then again, there are already laws on the books prohibiting the defacement of public property. Had you never done a junior high art project? Or been part of a stage crew for the school musical? Don't prohibit a kid from buying, using, or carrying a broad-tipped Sharpie into a public place. That would be their school.
That was too strange. We didn't have other people who want to speak.
I, I, I'd like to keep on reading.
Me too.
Yeah. All right, I will, I will say, I will summarize this much. This entire code belongs in the dustbin. It was brought to the council during summer vacation when folks aren't paying much attention, so it's easy to slip it into the agenda and get it passed. It's a wasteful piece of legislation, and most, much of it is already addressed with existing laws. It targets vulnerable populations unnecessarily, parolees, the unhoused, poor, students. But you council members should take a good, hard look at it and vote it down. When I think about the time, effort, and taxpayer money spent on pickleball courts, a new community rec center to the tune of twenty-two million dollars, a main street art installation for up to ninety thousand dollars, and you are, have allocated not one red cent for a warming and cooling center or public restrooms, I think you need to reevaluate your values and your priorities for what Portland needs most. Thank you.
Donald Chu.
Thank you very much. So, agenda item two of the proposed law to preserve public order that reads almost like a declaration of martial law. I know unusual noises, there's no obscenity, no nuisance, there's no annoying city workers. Who decides what's unusual, obscene, nuisance, or annoying? And making parolees register with police? They don't already have enough of a challenge reintegrating with society without the police watching them? Don't the police already have enough to do? If Portland were just being incorporated, we might need such laws. But Portland's a hundred twenty-five years old. It already has laws to address all these problems. What motivated the city to turn up the heat? Not everything on the twenty pages of a law can be traced to disappearing the house and how, but much of it can be. No one wants to be asked for money or reminded that our community has desperate people, but chasing them away is not the solution. For the past five decades, wealth has been rising to the top. Things are tight with the median income and the social safety net hasn't kept up. Much of that is due to tax cuts on the wealthy, which are half of what they were in nineteen seventy-five. It's also due to companies moving out of northern states to the south where there aren't unions, and then overseas where there aren't even comparable laws. The city is trying to fill in, i.e. with water, sewer, and trash services, and it has a thirty-million-dollar one-year's budget debt. Social services are supposed to be the county's responsibility, but it hasn't stepped up. It has ten times the budget, but only one tenth the debt. Debt isn't good, but until the rich pay more again, it's necessary to keep, still necessary to keep people housed, clothed, fed, employed, and off the streets. So I ask you in the common council for three things, or at least to consider them. Please don't go full totalitarian and pass the proposed public order law. Pressure the county to take on more responsibility. Get it to build affordable housing, provide water and sewer, collect and compost trash. All right, that should help city finances and people who are down and out. Push the local, state, and federal governments to increase taxes on the wealthy. Many of us, even of modest means, would be willing to pay more in taxes if we believed it would really help. But nobody wants to be a sucker and do it unless everyone else chips in too. And third, finally, get out into your communities and tell the people about the challenges facing government. Listen to their concerns and ideas for solutions. Get them volunteering at shelters and on communities and boards. Show them that they can make a difference. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm here to address issues concerning board five and board eight. Good evening, my name is Danielle Wimbish, and I live here in Portland, near Randall and Green Bush Streets. My dear friend Mecca had offered to read my speech here tonight because this proposed public order law doesn't just affect me, it affects all of us as a community, personal impact. In the past two years, I've experienced firsthand how laws like these are used unevenly and unfairly. My household has been the target of repeated complaints, none of which have ever been substantiated. Yet, police and code enforcement have been sent to my home again and again, over sixty-five times. Instead of protecting me, the system has been used to intimidate and silence me. If this new law passes, it will only make it easier for people in power, or even just different neighbors, to weaponize the law against anyone they don't like. Community impact. And, and I know I'm not the only one. The law doesn't just create order, it creates fear. It takes issues like loitering, noise, and public presence, things already addressed by existing laws, as folks have pointed out, and it turns them into opportunities for selective enforcement. That means people who are poor, unhoused, or simply viewed as different are the ones most likely to be targeted. We have already seen how easy it is for bias and discrimination to creep into enforcement. This law would make it worse and not better, and I remind you that we still don't have a human rights permission, Portland. Fiscal responsibility, it is also a financial issue. Every time the police responds to complaint, it costs taxpayers money. Instead of spending on harassment calls, we should be investing in real solutions, housing, mental health services, and community programs that actually address root causes. This law does nothing to solve problems. It just shifts them into the criminal system where they become even more costly. For instance, I have to use the public defender service to stand up for myself, which again, is a cost to taxpayers. In closing, in court of action, I urge you to think about the kind of community we want to build. Do we want a city where people live in fear of being unfairly targeted? Or one where fairness, compassion, and real solutions are our priorities? I strongly urge you to vote no on this law for the sake of both the justice and our community's future.
Thank you.
Dr. Reiner.
Evening. Nice to see you. I just want to say a few words that reading this law, I have some concerns about this potential selective enforcement of some of the, yes?
Could you state your name?
Oh, sorry. I'm Douglas Roder. Thank you. R A H N R. Okay. And I'm a physician, and I work with the homeless, as Mayor Steve knows. And here in Portland, and I'm concerned that some provisions of the law, particularly regarding to solicitation, may be used in a selective manner, that it may be targeting certain individuals in the city. There is clearly a growing homeless presence in the city, and there have been organizations such as the Brace Space and Lozen fishes and Family Health Network that have been trying to address those needs. And I just want to be very clear that if these are used in a selective manner, that I'll, I'll, I'll be probably bother some to some of you, but that's okay. It's, it's part of your job, I think. Okay, that's all I have to say.
Great call. Again, is anybody here to speak to the public hearing on the proposed local law related to public order?
I didn't sign up, but I heard you speak.
Hi, my name is Christina Darling. And I just wanted to just briefly address the council. I came here for a different issue. And upon hearing about this and then quickly perusing this new order, I just have to agree with a lot of those that have spoke that A, this was not advertised well. B, a number of people in Portland do not know about this happening. Or I know a number would be upset over the fact that people can't have a client-tipped marker, or if you get to control what you deem as inappropriate. The basis of this without clear and concise rules is ridiculous upon its premise. As a high school teacher, I'm fully aware of how you can wiggle in and out of different things without having very clear and defined rules. This is one that anybody, anywhere can do whatever they want. And as the last I checked, that is not something that we want to promote in the city, and it is not something that is viable. So as I said, I wasn't prepared to talk about this, but after hearing about it, I definitely do not think that this is something that should be approved. Thank you.
Okay, last call, let's hope hearing number two, public hearing on proposed local law related to public order. Yes.
Yeah, my name is Philip Roddy. I'm a resident of Portland here, living in Portland here for the last twenty-five years. I live in Big Island. This law, the way it is, if this enforced, it will target people. I live in this community. And I don't think this law ordinance is necessary for this community. We need, we need a community of innovative citizens. But if this ordinance passes, it will be exclusive to some other people. The reason B, how is it going to be applied? I can just say that I don't like you. Want to say something against me? Or maybe somebody said, how about this Jehovah Witness? Solicitor? How is it going to be applied? We need ordinance that bring people into our community, not ordinance that drives people out of our community. So I would suggest that probably all the council people, all the meeting, and they already speak their words and hear what people hear about this before you believe it or not. Thank you. Thank you.
Anybody else?
I have a. Hi there, I'm Priscilla. Thank you, and for beat. Um, I too came from another issue, but I do want to make one point. It feels like this is perhaps an overarching law that is created to legislate something that is too expensive to solve from a social service perspective. So if we are trying to make this community less attractive to certain populations because it is too hard or too expensive or too difficult for us to, to some points back there, work with the county or push them to do that, or work together as an institution to solve these problems, and instead we're trying to legislate our way out of them by creating an exclusive community, one that pushes people out, rather than carry the responsibility of, of what governments should do, which is support the people that work here. That's a, it's a cheater's way out, frankly, and I think we can do that.
Hi, my name is Takanah Newsome. I just found out about this tonight, actually. Literally about thirty minutes before it happened, so I do agree with others that there needs to be, you know, more public publication of public hearings, because I think that having diversity, like having a diversified profile, as far as like thoughts are concerned, it increases the value. You want to diversify your stocks in order to, you know, have a better community outcome and opinion, and you want to get different people's perspectives. So I do agree with a lot of people. And, and that, as far as that is concerned. I do have a question about the fine tip markers. Why is that happening? I understand it's related to graffiti. But you can't stop kids from using markers. You can prevent them and ask them not to graffiti things and, you know, and deface public, but you can't prevent, you can't regulate art materials. I am one, a person that grew up in Beacon, New York. I'm from Art City, as they call it. I do agree with the regulation of spray can aerosols, because I understand that there is a potential for abuse, and I think that what we need to be focused on is the health of the community. You know, I do see a lot of people that are struggling as far as health is concerned, and I am one of the people that has used or has attempted to use social services in Portland, and it's bare-bones. You know, nobody wants to be pushed out of their community. The one thing that they told me is that they would be able to bust me out of the community. And nobody wants to pick up and leave all of their belongings, their cats and things like that, and also the ASP scam is overrun. You know, there needs to be a lot of money that is redirected instead of being put into a nine-thousand-dollar freight. I didn't even hear about that, a nine-thousand-dollar friggin' statue. You know, when we have people that are living in the street, I walk down the streets of Portland, and I see people living, you know, with what they have and on the street, you know, and it's not their fault. People are people. People have a right to health, people have a right to food, people have a right to shelter. That, that is, you know, that's you don't have to be a, so quote-unquote empathetic person to, to see that. It's not absolute moralism. You know, that's, people deserve to, to be treated respectfully, and I see that's a really big problem. And also, I think that targeting the registration of e-bikes and bicycles, I think that is, that's targeting the people that you see that you don't want in your community because they look a little bit different and because they're struggling. And it's starting to create a problem for them. They already can't register a car. Some people can't even afford a car, something might, me included. I can't even afford a bike. But then now you want them to register it? That's not fair. I do agree that there needs to be regulations as far as how they're, they're conducting themselves on their bikes, but I feel like forcing them to register is going to create another another loophole where they're already going to be subjected to another hardship. And that's all that I have to say. Thank you so much for this.
Hello, my name is Jackie Chaplin. Good evening, esteemed mayor and council members. I don't have many comments, but I hope you will give some thought to the three statements I'm going to make. I am in agreement with all the people who have come before and the problems that they say exist with these proposals. I am in agreement with all the people who have come before and the problems that they say exist with these proposals. Um, I just became aware of it twenty-four hours ago and haven't even had a chance to really understand and read it completely. It feels like a hush and rush deal since it's vacation month and everyone's out of town. And so let's rush it through. So there will be no, there will be no opposition. Since the public dance was only made available four days ago, it feels to me like this is a pandering to the hierarchy. Go ahead and Google this phrase. It is a phrase, pandering to the hierarchy. Is it? Answer that question for yourself. Um, a question in particular, has the in-depth research even been done to support some of these proposals? For example, the prohibition of wheelchairs on downtown sidewalks. What does the accessibility of handicap laws say about this? I mentioned, good evening, esteemed mayor and council members. I wish you would call on your own morality, your own ethical nature, and take responsibility for these people as opposed to pushing them aside and make them someone else's problem, because that's what, where these proposals are targeting. Um, these people um, who this bad, have this badly written proposals would so badly affect. Would you not show these targeted populations? Sorry. Would you not show the targeted populations, your proposals, because these devastating changes you show to us? As I have shown to you, my esteemed mayor and council members, I bet that you postpone and give more thought to these proposals. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else for the proposal for law relating to public order? With one, I will close that public hearing and now we'll open up public hearing for agenda, I own number three. Adopt, propose, load the law to bicycles, like bicycles, bikes, electric scooters, and electric personal, the mobility device. For your openness, public hearing, one Mister Randall, though, make sure he understands the clarifications on some of the laws to help towards some of the misunderstandings. I should have thought of the last one as well.
Yeah, I just, just wanted to point out. Thank you, Katie. I just wanted to point out, I should have done some last one as well, so I apologize. Um, the laws were put out two weeks ago at the last council meeting, and they've been a work in progress. We have received feedback from a number of constituents from some of the other stakeholders and not-for-profit agencies, both directly and through contact with their various council members. Uh, a number of changes were made to both laws for the last law, for instance. Um, Mister and Mrs. Chu spoke up at the last meeting and objected to the lawyering provision. Um, it was nothing that the city was looking to really do. It was just in the old law and carried over. It was cleaned up a little bit from what it was. But when it was, became apparent, it was objectionable. It was something the city really didn't anticipate using, so we took it out. Um, so I mean, there has been a process that's been gone through, and it has been out there for a couple of weeks. All of the things happened on the website. In addition to the website, Portland Standard ran an article um, on these items, so it has been in the newspaper as well. So they have been noticed. Um, I want to specifically focus on the, the bike law. Um, a lot of things have been set out there about wheelchairs and personal mobility devices for individuals with mobility disabilities. Um, we had used the New York State Vehicle and Traffic Law definitions to define the items we were dealing with in the law. It was brought up to our attention by a number of people that those New York State B and BTNL definitions are not nearly as clear as one might think they are. Um, when you say a term like electric personal assisted mobility device, to my mind, that immediately goes to something that would help somebody who has a mobility issue get around. That actually talks about segways. That's dealing with segways and hoverboards. Um, so in order to clarify that, the law that's out there today, you will see it says, mobility scooters and electric wheelchairs primarily utilized for individuals with mobility disabilities are specifically excluded from the definitions. Um, absolutely, people can have their wheelchairs wherever they want. Absolutely, they can have their, their mobility devices wherever they want. I mean, that's the federal ADA law, state law, and the city has, is no intention of, of doing anything with that. Um, there's also been talk that those people may be forced to register those devices. The law does not require that. The city does plan on offering that as a free service. If you have a device like that and you would like to get a sticker on it, so if it's stolen, or if it's found lost or abandoned, we could tie it to the person that it goes to, that's fine. Also, if the city was made aware of a recall and somebody bought their secondhand and didn't know about it, we could contact the people that are on the list. Don't have to do it. It's completely up to them. No obligation, but it's something that we felt we could offer as a free service. Um, the other thing with this law, we immediately had some pushback over the no bikes on Main Street. And when the law was going through the drafting process, Main Street had not been made a two-way street yet. I think I can safely say the two-way traffic on Main Street has gone much better than even our greatest hope or anticipation could have been. Um, it's been great. It hasn't been a, a big problem. Um, and it's beautiful and, you know, kudos to, to the administration that started it and the administration that finished it. Um, I mean, I think it's great. But that being said, we decided to, to take a little bit of a slow roll approach when it came to e-bikes on Main Street. As weeks have gone by, maybe we could open it up to e-bikes now. The, the thought today is, um, that it would be better off to wait until next spring after we've had a little bit more experience under our belts and make sure it's okay. It's the only spot in the city that they're excluded from is specifically the Main Street area. Otherwise, um, it's right there. The registration of bicycles has been in the city code since sometime in the nineteen seventies, I believe. Its application has been, sometimes it was done widely, sometimes not, more recently, not so much, but it has been in the city code since, I believe, either the sixties or seventies. Um, and a lot of people that have lived in Portland for years can remember when they were a child going down the police station and registering their bike.
There are fees for that.
There will be a fee. We've talked about, um, council will be setting that at a later date, so that's up to council. My guess is the fee would be somewhere between three and ten dollars, depending on the type of bike. E-bikes with a little bit more than a standard bike. Um, we've talked about, you know, should there be a fee if it's a juvenile, it's some licensing of bike, and those are all things we could talk about um, when we set the fees for it. So the fee would be modest. It's a one-time fee. It's one and done. It's not something where you'd have to register every year or every two years. As long as you own the bike, the registration is good. Um, and as I said, it, it helps with theft. It helps with lost or stolen bikes. Um, and that, that's the major reason behind that, and that's the reason, if you look at when council put that, the registration in back in, like I said, the seventies, that was the reason they did, there was a really bad problem of bike thefts going on back then, so council put it in. Um, it's not meant to discriminate against any set person or group. Um, it gets equally applied. Um, and other than that, um, we did also make some changes to the local law. And as we go through this process, I've learned things. I had the chance to talk to somebody at our county that was very helpful. Um, and I did not realize, we had said that to ride an e-bike, you need to be an approved, you need to wear an approved bike helmet. There is no such thing as an approved e-bike helmet in the United States. The United States has no standards for e-bike helmets. I did not realize that. The only country apparently that does is the Netherlands. Um, has e-bike helmet standards, so when you go out and buy a bike helmet, it's really not designed to be used with an e-bike, but there's really not one out there that probably is. So, um, we changed that in response to that, saying that you should wear at least a bike helmet. So if you want to wear something that's better, or you want to order one from a website, or you can get one that stands up to the Danish standards, which are what they recommend for e-bikes, that's great. So we've tried to be responsive to, to folks as they've come forward with issues and to clarify things that were ambiguous. Um, you know, it's, like I said, it's a learning process. We read one definition, three of us will read it. All three of us think it says something slightly different. Um, you know, so that, you, we, we've tried to, to, to clear up those ambiguities. Um, you know, and anything that we legislate here, you know, if you violate a law, it, it doesn't mean that the mayor or I or anyone on council gets to make a decision on that. It's going to go to the courts. And the courts are going to have a final say in, in what goes on. Um, whether it's under the e-bike law or whether it's under the obscenity law, nothing in there allows the city to act in a later way. It all allows us to utilize the court system that's out there to move things forward.
Okay. Thank you. With that, towards the proposal of the law relating to bicycle, electric bikes, and scooters, electric first of all, assisted mobility device, and, oh, our.
Good evening again. Um, just for the record, my name is Bo Harbin. Not only am I county legislator, but I'm an avid cyclist who strongly opposes the proposed bicycle registration requirements and riding restrictions. I do want to start by saying I do support no bikes on sidewalks. Makes a lot of sense. No gas-powered bikes. Okay, I can agree with that. And kids, ideally everyone should wear a helmet. No problems there whatsoever. But that's where my, um, support for this proposed law ends. First of all, constitutional concerns. This ordinance violates fundamental rights established by over a hundred thirty years of legal precedent. In eighteen ninety, in the case of Swift versus the city of DePica, it was determined the citizens have, quote, "the absolute right to choose for himself the mode of events he desires," unquote. Registration requirements violate First Amendment freedom of movement, Fourth Amendment privacy protections by creating surveillance databases that enable discriminatory enforcement. Next point, e-bikes are bicycles. It's not up to the city to decide whether or not Main Street is ready for e-bikes. It's for us as cyclists who have every right to be on the streets to determine if we feel safe on Main Street, not the other way around. We get to choose. Municipal failures nationwide. Cities consistently abandon registration programs because they don't work. Oakland, California, lost eighteen thousand dollars annually while collecting only eight hundred dollars in fees, a twenty-two to one loss ratio before repealing their program in twenty sixteen. Madison, Wisconsin, repealed their registration requirement in twenty twenty-one after administrative costs exceeded revenue. Montgomery County, Maryland, repealed theirs in twenty twenty due to discriminatory enforcement concerns, and the list goes on and on. Economic impact. Registration creates barriers that hurt our local economy. Bicycle tourism generates eighty-three billion dollars of, uh, nationally, with cyclists spending forty percent more than motorized tourists. Let us come down Main Street, um, and spend our money where we choose. Wisconsin's bicycle, uh, tourism alone supports over thirteen thousand jobs and generates nine hundred twenty-four million dollars annually. Registration fees, even at a low cost, just, uh, deportion, disproportionately burden low-income residents who rely on bicycles for transportation. Safety research contradicts these restrictions. Safety improves through infrastructure investment, not access restrictions. Toronto research found protected bike lanes reduce injury risk by eighty-nine percent compared to major streets. New York City documented forty to fifty percent reductions in industry injuries for all road users while protected infrastructure was installed, and the Netherlands is a prime example of this. Why was no bike infrastructure included on our new five million dollar Main Street? Better up for this, this. Now, in twenty-first century, volunteer programs work better. Bike Index has recovered nearly twenty million dollars in stolen bicycles across participating cities without fees or mandatory requirements. Calgary doubled their required, uh, recovery rate from voluntary registrations. I urge you to reject this ordinance and instead invest in proven solutions. Voluntary registration system, protected infrastructure, education programs, and enforcement of existing traffic laws. These approaches respect constitutional rights, achieve better safety outcomes, and support economic development without discriminatory enforcement potential. Thank you.
Karen Evans?
Good evening. I'll try to read fast. My name is Taryn Evans, and I'm a resident of Ward Two. I'm also an e-bike rider, an avid e-bike rider, who crucially moved back to the city a few years ago after forty-odd years in Florida because of the opportunity living here provided me to park my car and use my bike as an alternate form of transportation. I use my bike to run to the grocery store, visit the library, eat at restaurants downtown, and run a wide variety of errands around town and get the regular exercise I need. There have been times when I have been able to go carless for months at a time. But now I feel like that freedom to choose the form of transportation that best suits me is at risk. I am aware that there are people who unsafely use their bikes, just like there are many who unsafely operate their four-wheel vehicles that travel at speeds much above the speeds that I can go on my Plax Two e-bike. When I ride my bike, I accept a certain amount of risk as an adult and try to minimize that risk, just like I hope automobile drivers do when they get in a car. Enforcement of existing laws, education on the proper safe operation of your bicycle, and better bicycle infrastructure are the best methods to improve safety on important streets. Although there are many common sense elements to the new proposed laws, many of them, many of which have seemingly been ordinance already present and just being reiterated, some of them have seemingly been written with the intent to make owning an e-bike so onerous or problematic as to discourage people from, in fact, buying them. I do not believe anybody who actually owns and operates an e-bike has been asked to help write these new laws. The impression given by these new laws is that even the legitimate and safety use of e-bikes is a problem to certain people, and we don't want you riding around our town. In fact, the laws are written seem, as written, seem to basically make it illegal for you to own an e-bike unless they own, you own your own home. A committee that included e-bike riders' owners could possibly tweak some of the language to make them less onerous, and I would urge the county council to not vote on these laws until such a committee can meet and tackle this. At the very least, some stuff that doesn't make any sense should be addressed, like implying Church Street crosses Main Street. Finally, I would like to address the parts of this that have to do with prohibiting the e-bikes from riding downtown. Firstly, e-bikes, e-scooters are exclusively targeted as prohibited. Downtown is one of the few places, ironically, outside of residential side streets that I have felt comfortable riding because of the lower posted speed limit. As long as you're riding, if you are just like any other vehicle and follow traffic rules and maintain a defensive driver attitude, you are as safe as any other driver on that street. I was excited and happy when I attended the L.A. Courtland Public Meetings last year and the city's comprehensive planning meeting that this past June, to see that more bike infrastructure and places for people to ride was one of the things many, many people were asking for. Prohibiting relatively safe streets is going in the wrong direction. Smart growth means encouraging more people, not less, to use other means of getting around the city. I mean, more people riding their bikes, no matter the type, makes riders, pedestrians, and car drivers safer. These laws will be an actual deterrent to that happening, and frankly, will make Portland less attractive a place to live to people like me wanting to live and act in less car-centered lifestyle. Ask the places where alternative transportation has been encouraged, whether it has been a boon to a city. I think you will find the answer in the resounding yes. And I, right here, I would like to encourage everybody, who is a bike rider in the audience, to think about forming a bike advocacy group, because I think they would have done a better job helping the county council write this, these new laws. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Terry Evans. Um, is he, yeah, what she said? If you look at the medical profession, more and more and more medical doctors are crazy e-bikes. I don't know how many of you ride e-bikes now or ride a bicycle three times a year, but it may be very soon that when you go to your doctor, he's going to say, if you're going someplace within three miles of your home, you should not take your car. You should take a bicycle. If you're over age sixty-five, the e-bikes are a great way to go. As I can attest with my knees and ankles, it's the only thing that keeps me going. I'll ride my, I'll ride my pedal bike still sometimes, but when you start going up hills and things, those e-bikes are great. What does the doctor say? Why aren't they going to tell you to start riding your e-bike? They're going to say it improves your best, better cause, you know, better fitness. Cardiovascular, I can't say it. Strengthen muscles and bones, enhance joint mobility, weight management, reduce. Strengthen muscles and bones, enhance joint mobility, weight management, reduce stress levels. I bet you'd like to reduce your stress level nights like this. Improve your mood, and it contributes to better sleep. If you say, "But I cannot ride my bike within for three miles from my house to downtown or anywhere because it's not safe," then you need to find some council members that knows how to make it safe to ride your bicycle anywhere within three miles of your house. If you want to go downtown to eat, ride your bike like my wife and I do. If you want to go to the library, ride your bike like my wife and I do. It's very helpful. It feels a lot better than getting in the car and driving. Let's see, the power, the the charging of the batteries. I um, I looked up before I came, said, um lithium batteries that explode. It says, yes, laptops with lithium batteries explode. iPhones will explode. Um, a lot of power tools with cheap batteries will explode. E-bikes with cheap batteries will explode. The, and of course, as in your, they've got to be UL-listed batteries. And everybody's starting to know that with more and more and more laws being placed where that has to be. But if you're going to restrict charging on a UL-listed um battery for a bicycle, you really, in fairness, should do the same restrictions on power tools, iPhones, laptops, and you won't do it because you know there will be a public outcry. But when you say e-bike lithium batteries, you need to think, well, what would be the results if I tried to do this to laptops or power tools? As long as it's UL-listed, it's not going to catch fire like all the cheap batteries. So if you have one and the other, you're being redundant. Let's see, what's the worst? That was the biggest thing.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. My name is Kim Cameron, and I'm president of the League of Women Voters of Portland County. And I'm also a member of the Portland County Planning Board. I actually live in Prell, but I'm here representing the league tonight. This proposed law puts up barriers to people using bikes, e-bikes, e-scooters, electric personal assisted mobility devices in the city of Portland. You know, alternatively, the city could think the opposite. You could do encouraging individuals to use these forms of transportation as a step forward toward a coherent policy that supports energy efficiency and smart growth in this city. These devices decrease traffic congestion, air pollution, noise pollution, and parking lot demands. Something that we have a problem with here in Portland. Input from the public to the Portland County Strategic Plan and now also to the City of Portland Comprehensive Plan strongly indicate that the people want more, not less, walking and cycling infrastructure. This bill does not do that, or this proposed law does not do that. We encourage the city council to develop a campaign to educate the public about the hazards of lithium batteries and how to charge them properly. The fire at Bardmore Terrace Apartments in October of twenty twenty-four indicates that people improperly charge lithium batteries. Rarely does someone want to deliberately put themselves and their neighbors in danger. Banning the charging of e-batteries in multi-unit buildings will simply hide this practice, not deal with the fundamental issue. Individuals are naive about the hazards of lithium batteries. Furthermore, individuals with low incomes often live in these multi-unit buildings. So this law would impact them unequally compared to others. So thank you for that. And those are all I want to say.
Hey, everyone. I'm Catherine Wild. I'm an avid cyclist, and I basically just want to reiterate everything everyone said before me. Um, I commute via bike um for both environmental and health benefits. And I believe this law is misdirected. Um, instead of creating more legislation that will disproportionately impact certain members of our community, I believe the council should instead focus on ways it can create a safe and supportive atmosphere for people of all abilities to enjoy biking and walking in our community. Expanded bike lanes, lower speed limits, and changing air views from a car-centric community to a pedestrian-focused one would not only enhance safety but quality of life as well. Thank you.
Hello, city council members, the mayor, and the community members here with us tonight. My name is Amber Pacola. I work for one of the largest employers in the city of Portland. I'm speaking both on behalf of my personal experience and my professional knowledge about accessibility and disability. I have a master's degree in disability services, and I took a course on disability law. I appreciate the city's effort to create clear guidelines for e-bikes and scooters. Safety and order in our streets matters to all of us. But I want to highlight an important issue. Under the Americans with Disabilities Act, people with mobility disabilities have the right to choose their mobility device. That includes wheelchairs, but also less traditional devices such as segways and other power-driven mobility devices, which is the language used in the ADA. This current draft ordinance bans or restricts EPAMDs in certain areas, but if a person with a disability relies on one of these devices, those rules could unlawfully limit their access. My understanding is that it has been edited. However, that language still does not reflect the Americans with Disabilities Act, which defends disabled individuals' rights. Not every person with a disability uses a wheelchair. Many people can walk short distances but need a segue or scooter for long distance or uneven terrain. If we don't carve out protections, the city could unintentionally be discriminating against disabled residents and visitors. The good news is that this can be fixed with simple language in the ordinance. I suggest adding a clause such as, "Nothing in the law shall be construed to restrict or prohibit the use of a wheelchair or other power-driven mobility device, including segways or other EPAMDs by any individual with a mobility disability as defined under the ADA." This would preserve safety-first rules for the general public while ensuring compliance with federal law and protecting disabled residents. I urge the council to make this amendment before casting the law. It's a little, it's a small change, but it makes a big difference. It keeps our city both safe and inclusive and ensures Portland is on the right side of federal civil rights laws. Thank you for your consideration of this, and I would also like to bring to your attention that handicap parking is an outdated state.
Rose Rafferty.
Hi, Rose Rafferty.
Hi.
Um, it has been brought to my attention that part of the registration, the thought behind it of regular bicycles is to reduce bicycle theft. How many bikes are stolen in the city of Portland every year? And what, like, how much is a lot? Is it enough to require every other person to go out of their way to register the three, four bikes in their house? To put up with that? And and does registering them actually reduce theft? Is there any studies that say we put in a registration program and bicycle theft was reduced forty percent from any city? Um, secondly, how are you going to enforce it? Are you, am I going to be riding my bike to work, which I do multiple days a week, and be pulled over by a police officer because I don't have a yellow sticker on my bicycle registering yet? Are you gonna pull over kids on the way to school because some ten-year-old doesn't have their bike registered? Are police gonna talk to minor children and give them a citation or their parents' citation without their parent present? I think it's just a lot of bureaucracy that you can't possibly enforce. If someone comes from Homer to into the city to go to work on their bike, their bike doesn't have to be registered because they're not city of Portland residents. How is anyone gonna know that? Like, I don't understand how you're gonna enforce it and why write another law, because there has been a law since nineteen seventy-four that isn't being used. So why have another law and more stickers and more, like, just a hassle to every single person who just wants to ride their stupid bike somewhere? It's bad enough. I'm in fear of my life because people run stop signs and ride around you and go up the street at ten thousand miles an hour, yell obscenities. I yell them back, just in case you want to try. But I just don't understand how this giant bureaucracy is going to help anything. Like, what's the point of it? Besides me, apparently a lot of people in Portland ride their bikes very mad. But thanks. Have a night.
Hi, I'm one of those people that needs a mobility device for short distances. Um, everyone has already said most of the things I would say. I'd like to add the historical context. Um, doing some research about the history of these uh laws registering bikes. You mentioned that we've already had the bike registration laws on the books, and we've had it enforced on and off. So I question whether it's worth bringing back, but I also want to point out that uh the source, the the reason a lot of these bike registration laws, usually they came out around the sixties, seventies, see, under the Civil Rights Movement, it's a law has its roots in some downtown laws. So for that reason, and the fact that I also have a wheelchair and sometimes use other electronic devices, I would really like to have someone that has uh experience in disability law take a look at this. Access Independence was, uh, when I asked them, completely unaware of this proposal and said no one had reached out to them. Since they are the local expert on this kind of thing, I'm extremely disappointed to hear that basic level of oversight was not done. Thank you.
Hi, now, number two. Um, agenda item number three of the law proposed to replace chapter eighty-seven of the city code, which deals with bicycles. Much of the reason for the law is to deal with e-bikes, but the only real difference between pedal bicycles and e-bikes is their speed. Bicycles are already subject to vehicle traffic law, for example, the thirty mile per hour speed limit. Neither bicycles or e-bikes are likely to reach that speed on a flat road. In any case, the operator is responsible for operating safe. Concerns such as riding on sidewalks are already addressed in the code. Front and back lights are required in the dark. Back when the bicycle code was last updated, then people didn't wear helmets, so that could be added. The requirement to register bikes is in the code but has not been enforced for decades. That hasn't been necessary, and no evidence has been presented to show that it would help enough to justify the enforcement burden. Due to fear of fires, the proposed law requires that e-bike batteries be certified by underwriter lab. Fire hasn't been shown to be a problem, and there's no such national certification requirement. It would conflict with the Constitution's Commerce Clause to require all bicycles, e-bikes, to have UL sort of bike batteries. Again, I recommend that the existing city code be tweaked as needed, rather than be thrown out and replaced with a fly of the new law. Thank you.
All right, I'm sure uh this horse has any life in it left, but uh here we go. Um, hello, everyone. My name is Noel Beck. I am a resident of the Bellman Avenue, one of Portland's newly minted dirt roads. It's also important to note that I am a rabble rouser, so it's a, actually a municipal uh tag, so just be forward. Um, we do have a problem with bikes being illegally or unsafely illegally operated on the streets of Portland. I agree. We do not have a shortage of existing laws in New York that regulate non-motor vehicle traffic. For example, we do not need new laws to enforce cyclists running against traffic. It's already illegal in New York State. What we do need is enforcement of existing law, but more importantly, improved accessibility for alternative forms of transport. We need the absentee landlords of streets like Rotten Ave to shovel their sidewalks in the winter. And the city of Portland to assure things like curb cuts are on level with roadways. Entire hungry potholes on town, they are filled. Where we, where do we stand on unicycles? Like, you can't ride a unicycle with, without hands. Um, how do you differentiate city resident bicycles, bicyclists with non-city resident bicyclists? Right? I don't know. Things we might need to think about. I'm gonna piggyback. This confusing, these confusing and draconian loitering laws do little to address the real issue. We have too many in this community who lack homes. Reducing hurdles to arresting the unhoused does nothing to solve the crisis. We need real action to get to get to the root of the problem. The threat of a ticket does not prevent public urination or defecation. Public restrooms prevent that. Non-fulfilled and loitering laws don't clean up encampments in Courthouse Park. Shelters help with that. In addition to these laws, I am perplexed at proposals that ban purchases of markers and spray paint by teens and the outlawing of banging a gong in public. What an affront to T-Rex fans everywhere. These proposals seem hastily cobbled together rife with typos, including that magical portal from church to main. Language that's clearly lifted from other municipalities, even other centuries, without thought to local relevance. I ask council to reevaluate, now, I actually changed that. I ask council to just toss this in the garbage and start from the beginning. Let's not, let's, let's target root problems instead of loading our charter with unenforceable laws that only serve to create an illusion of action. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi there, for the record, Chris Valentine Banky again, board eight. Um, so the design of Main Street did not include a bike lane, and that was an error. And part of this law, it seems to me, works to solve this error on the backs of Portland residents who use other methods of transportation, whether by health or environmental choice or necessity. We spent millions of dollars and years working on Main Street, and now we are saying that, what, some people can have access to it? That you must own a car or you must be mobile enough to park your chosen mode of transportation and walk into Main Street? Rather than provide opportunities for folks to engage with the Main Street businesses that need us the most, this legislation creates a group of haves and have-nots. People who have a car and can get to Main Street, and people who don't. I rather, uh, regarding the registration, the law has been on the books since nineteen seventy-four, seventy-five. Why now? This seems a veiled attempt to give law enforcement a method to hassle those who do not have registration for their bicycle, whether because they cannot pay the fee or because they don't have an address to put on the form as in this law. It seems to me perhaps another bit of legislation sliding in there, attempting to make the community less attractive to those who need us most. Thanks.
Good evening, my name is Christina Durrell, I'm here today to address the common council's proposal for adoption to the city code in regards to the e-bikes and the electric propulsion systems. I'm here today to oppose this legislation for a number of different reasons. Most of what is included in the section under operation restrictions is of non-necessity because New York state already has laws in place in regards to e-bikes. The laws clearly state where they can be ridden, how old an individual needs to be, how would require it, et cetera. If the council wants to place more restrictions on where these can be ridden, can you provide proper justification for this? Um, if the improper operation of these devices is so problematic, which was what it begins, and it's been such a concern, um, why are you not acting within the legalities that already exist to create a safe environment for everyone? In the next section within this legislation that I oppose is the registration of such devices. What is the real reason behind the need for this registration? Um, as stated in the draft of legislation, it shall be unlawful for any resident of the city of Portland to operate a bicycle, electric scooter, electric bike, or E P A M D upon any street, public way, or other public place unless it is registered intact. I'm glad that you clarified that this will not be applied to the elderly or disabled individuals that use these modes. However, does this mean that you will be extending this registration to hoverboards, meaning almost every family in Brooklyn that bought their kid a hoverboard for Christmas now has to register them? Or pay multiple registration fees for these devices? This is such a slap in the face to city residents who are already having financial struggles with new assessment rates, increasing school taxes, and to add another expenditure is not needed. Additionally, in the registration details, a certificate has to be presented. What about if an individual does not have this certificate, especially for those that have owned a device for years? Also stated in this legislation is that you can impound e-bikes and e-scooters, but not E M P A Ds. It's as almost as if the council had a conscience and decided that maybe they should not steal Grandma's scooter or Little Johnny's hoverboard. Also, where and how and who will be paying for these devices to be impounded? I'm assuming once again, the city residents will be faced with this financial burden. Another problem with this legislation is that it applies to city residents only. Therefore, any college student or Portlandville resident is not required to register devices, yet will be able to use them within city limits. It then begs the question, how does registering these devices create a safer environment? The answer, it simply does not. It only adds another unnecessary expense to the burden of the people of the city of Portland. Why is this such a concern? Because upon looking at the various municipalities surrounding us, there are no other cities that currently require registrations for these devices. Even New York City, which has a much larger percentage of the population using e-bikes, where one could argue that safety is more of a concern, they do not require the registration. Actually, when they considered it, they determined that doing so had no bearing on safety and it was met with a number of legal challenges. Some of those would be that it was creating barriers to transportation disproportionately impacting low-income individuals. And that the enforcement of this would also be disproportionate against student groups of people based on ethnicity and or age. So again, I'm asking the council, what is the reason behind requiring individuals to register such devices? From the facts that I have seen, the argument of safety is not a viable one. And to me, this seems nothing except trying to create hardships for the individuals in Portland. One that I do not see as necessary.
Anybody else here to speak to?
I have.
Okay.
So I just think, again, if I need some, I think that when you uh are saying electronic personal assistant mobility device, that needs to be more um defined. I did read that it says mobility scooters and electric wheelchairs that are used for people with mobility disabilities are specifically excluded from the above-dutch definition. But also, um, while I completely understand that the law has existed to register bikes, um, it's just another way to distinguish the have-nots from the have. And I don't think that um it's necessary to combat theft, it's certainly not going to prevent theft. What I think is that we need to get to the root cause of the theft and why theft is occurring. I have seen on Nextdoor that a lot of people have said that their bikes have been stolen and people have identified or assumed or raised suspicion that certain people have stolen bikes. Um, we need to understand why the theft is occurring and need to get to the bottom of that, not trying to, not try to impose another fine so that, you know, we can, you know what I'm trying to say, but thank you.
Good evening, my name is Steve Williams, uh, living Ward six. And I do wanna say you took a lot of hot air out of me, sir. I was coming in hot, and I appreciate you clarifying that. I got the documents, but I do wanna um, I waived it, and I wanna say what I waived the same, that's okay? I'm trying to be quick.
Yeah.
Um, I wrote it down, so that way I don't have a lot of. Uh, the first thing I do wanna say is e-bikes are bikes, just to be fair. Um, I will say all bikes matter, but. Okay, my name is Steve Williams and I raise share my concerns about the proposed law requiring registration licensing fees for bicycles, e-bike scooters, electric uh, electric, electric personal assistant mobility devices, um, which you clarified, so thank you. Uh, while I understand the council's interest in promoting safety, I'm concerned this proposal would have unintended consequences for some of our most vulnerable uh residents, which you said who are unaware of some of these tensions. And I think you all did a great job of making them aware of some of those possibilities. Um, I operate a business on Central Avenue, which is right next door to Catholic Charities, where, as you know, several times a month, people can come and pick up food and have other uh of their social community needs being met. I witnessed firsthand almost every day, several people pulling up with bikes and loading up their bicycles with bags and bags of groceries, trying to scrap boxes to their bicycles to get food to their families and for themselves. Um, I think two people ride bikes, people who want to ride bikes and people who have to ride bikes. I think that goes the same for scooters, segways, whatever the devices are. Um, and so I think the people who ride bikes, if they want to, this may feel like less of an issue for, but those who ride bikes, so they have to are, have an issue with this. Um, couple things that jump out to me, again, kudos, and that definitely is what you call it, echoes to everything that was said. Um, the first one is just the basis of registration. The people who ride bikes, because they have to, oftentimes are the same population of people who don't have the proper information to register a bike, they don't have stable addresses to link them to, they don't have a working phone numbers to connect them to. Some of them, to be honest with you, if you've interacted with them at all, not are, are even not even sure their own names in some cases to to have this cohesive process that they have to go through. Um, so I just think it's not really considering those populations of people. Um, I know you said, you know, can I be a little more specific? I know you said, um, you haven't decided the price yet, you know, something ten dollars, whatever it's gonna be. I got a family of six, sixty bucks for me, may not sound like a big deal, but that's the price of a bike. You know what I mean, for somebody who's already struggling, even ten dollars, it's like, man, I gotta drop ten dollars on this bike registration. Um, I think something while I was reading, impounding bikes for who aren't properly registered for some of these folks who take their bikes, that's their livelihoods, quite literally. Um, and yada, 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 I don't wanna take too much out of room, you already know what we're talking about. But I can, I would ask you as a concerned citizen who witnessed this firsthand, just reconsider um this, what do you wanna call this? Uh, yeah, attachment, I'm sorry, I came in here hot, so I wasn't really ready to go. But just really think this through, check the language to make sure we're taking care of the people in our community who need us to take care of them the most.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Hello, uh, my name's Nick Babel, uh, I live in Plattehead. Everybody's pretty much said what I wanna say, but the one thing I just haven't heard anybody mention is um, in New York state, a municipality doesn't have the authority to require registration for vehicles that are already defined under state law. Since e-bike scooters and similar devices are classified in New York state vehicle traffic law, only the state through the DMV can regulate registration. A local government can set operating rules, but it can't create its own parallel registration system. I mean, like, this got somehow got to this point and we don't have, we don't have attorneys to read this stuff. I mean, I'm, I'm a private investigator and I work in the legal system, I do a lot of criminal cases and I before that, I was a journalist and I covered a lot of town boards and council meetings and stuff and it just always shocks me that you know, we have all these lawyers who pay all this money to, and like, how do we get those funds?
Hi. I'm Broner again, sorry. Um, I just wanna make a comment and and it it seems like bicycles are kinda seen as a problem. Uh, before I came to Portland County twenty years ago, I lived in Loveland, Ohio. And Loveland is a lovely town and it's on a seventy-mile bike trail. And for six months or more out of the year, downtown Loveland was a beehive of commerce surrounding the bike trail, restaurants, bike rentals, uh, bed and breakfasts, you name it. Everyone was coming there, parking their cars, bicycling with their kids, et cetera. And it was a real economic driver for that small town. And so if you kinda look at that as an opportunity, it's okay, how can we expand what could be a wonderful uh recreational and financial uh vehicle for this community? You know, I I encourage you to look at it through through different eyes, if you will, because I saw it firsthand and it was great, so that's awesome.
My name's Mike Dexter, I've been a long time resident, all-time resident of Portland. I was here several weeks ago talking about these issues and at the time, I was told Mr. Michael said that there was a something in the works to get something done. My time, my mention at that time was not so much the vehicles themselves, but going up and down North Main Street, of which I worked part-time at St. Mary's Church and watching people in the street. When I had a scooter when I was young, it was foot pedal. Uh, the one that I saw going up and down Main Street, he was doing at least thirty miles an hour on a motor scooter, weaving in and out of traffic. My biggest reason for talking is the safety issue of having these vehicles on the streets. He had no turn signals, there was no thing for the brake, he was just going so fast, weaving in and out of traffic. And then I see other people on the sidewalk, which bikes are okay on the sidewalk, but motor scooters on the sidewalk with two or three people on the motor scooter. That to me becomes a safety issue for the people walking on the sidewalk. But the other thing is the noise of this one, it wasn't electric because an electric vehicle or a motor scooter would not have been making as much noise, so it was probably gas powered. The other thing that I mentioned that night that I would also like to see, as I get older, the noise level of people with pickup trucks or a car or motorcycles, the noise level. I drive my car, my my muffler has to be up to speed. If not, I will get stopped for a bad muffler. Hearing all of the noise level from the number of vehicles that are in an intersection and step on the gas just to make noise is very, very upsetting. Not only to me as an older person, but to a lot of other people that are just sitting there hoping to enjoy the environment. So I hope that's something else that you look into is just the noise level of other vehicles with mufflers that are probably illegal. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
Howdy, I'm Rob Hager, I live in Ward of five. Uh, I bug some of you recently via email about something similar. I wanna reiterate much of what's been said already, but I I wanna talk about the the nuisance angle just a little bit, and the safety one too. Um, every day when I walk to work at uh, Suzy Portland, I cross Tompkins. Uh, and every day it's a different degree of peril because not bicyclists or e-scooters or whatever. Um, I have to contend with drivers who, in their many-ton SUVs, pickups, even cars, have a real possibility of killing if they don't see me or if, I don't know, uh, someone looks down at their phone at the wrong time, right? The difference between an e-bike as a way of getting around and a way of transporting your family or any kind of bike and a car like that is that an e-bike hitting me might break my ribs, right? A car hitting me is gonna turn me into mulch. And I don't see us as a city spending the amount of time and effort pursuing actually existing problems, right, like the dangers of such maybe freewheeling is wrong, but such loose regulations of our streets. Instead focusing on a problem which is relatively small, right? Uh, bicyclists and e-bikes, while there are fantastic stories about such-and-such either uh hurting an old person uh walking down the street. Uh, the same story happens many more times every day at the hand of a of a car. Uh, I urge you to think about really how serious of a problem this is and what might uh our prioritizing this mean when really there are much bigger issues when it comes to pedestrian rental things.
And that's proper public hearing on the bicycles, e-bikes, like scooters, personal assistance, mobile devices. And I said, those are public hearing, public hearing number four, public hearing proposal, the law related fire department cost recovery fees, videos to that. And public hearing before, public hearing on local law related to fire department, cost recovery fees. Last call, public hearing on proposal of laws, late to the fire department cost. All right, so I take a minute to thank everybody for coming, uh, at the point of these public hearings. Is to get input from everybody, so we get to, probably, we get to the the laws on agenda, it's number two and three. I'm gonna ask the table, those, uh, pull down so that there, certainly there's a lot of good ideas here, I think three, four pages of notes that of ideas, so we put the council to reflect on those and we'll go get back to some straight ideas that other people have had to address. So we certainly appreciate it as well, hurt. Um, so it gets us a vital to to that. That will forward with the rest of the meeting, so I'll call a meeting at order.
Councilmember Merter.
Here.
Councilmember Silliman.
Here.
Councilmember Fennello is recorded absent. Councilmember Lane.
Here.
Councilmember Conley.
Here.
Councilmember Carpenter is recorded absent. Councilmember Beckwith.
Present.
Councilmember Michaels.
Present.
All rise, this is a fight. Everybody here, privilege of the floor, let me get Mr. Dexter.
Good evening, mayor and council members. My reason for being here is a week ago Monday, I was passing back to St. Mary's to finish my job. And as I was driving by Capco, something extremely disappointing. And I really can't tell you how disappointed I was. Because I went to him and said, what are you doing? We're cutting down through trees and fun capital, who gave you the authorization? Uh, the city, no, Capco did. I should have said at the time, stop what you're doing. I wanna see the authorization for what you're doing. I didn't. I didn't. It was a mistake. I'm chairman of the Landscape and Design Commission. I've been on the commission for twenty-five years. I've been chairman probably for the last fifteen or twenty years. What they were doing was just painful to watch. If you know how passionate I am about my trees. Our trees. I watched them do it. I took pictures of it. I got videos of it. I called the mayor. I talked to the mayor two minutes on his voicemail. I think he got an idea of just how upset I was watching. The second tree come down. The first tree, which was smaller because years ago we had planted two trees. And it was vandalized. This is an organization at Capco that asked for the trees to be planted. We didn't knock on their door to say, would you like a tree? We planted the trees because they wanted trees. We planted two of them. One was vandalized. If they both grown at the same time, they both would have been on the same size. Unfortunately, the tree that was broken. Was planted secondary and it suffered the consequences of being planted next to a tree that had been in the ground, I think for twelve years. I stopped one day and said, the tree out front is struggling. Please get a five gallon pail of water and put some water on it to see if it's going to recover. Watching what they were doing. I just. I watched them take the whole tree down. If I had stopped them, at least we could have saved the tree. I have since talked to the director, the executive director of Capco for two hours within a day or two. He told me that they went through the process, the process went through City Hall. And talking to the mayor, nothing was ever okay through City Hall to remove those two trees. I talked to two gentlemen at the DPW. One of them said he did not know anything about it. The other one said. He kind of knew about it and one of the ideas was to take the tree out and transplant it. It didn't happen. So basically they had no okay to take trees down. Having talked to the executive director. Probably the person that authorized it was in Italy. I don't know if she's back yet or not. She was the uh grounds person for Capco. We have worked tirelessly over the last twenty-five years to plant hundreds of trees in the city of Portland. We have. Rules and regulations on what you can do. There's a chapter in the ordinance, chapter two seventy-three about trees. One of the things it says about trees. Prior to any trimming or pruning of any public trees upon or overhanging the public right of way of the city of Portland. Prevented trees from coming in contact with public uh wires. Shall be provided to the city and written approval of the superintendent of the Department of Public Works shall be obtained. The Department of Public Safety shall present a description of this work to the Landscape and Design Commission, my commission. For review. And the commission shall forward the recommendation to the Department of Public Safety for their final approval. All trimming or pruning of public trees pursuant to the sub-section, subsection shall be in accordance with the provisions. Of the chapter in all local laws, regulations and ordinances. One of the things when people get trees in the city of Portland. There's an application to fill out. The application says. If you accept a tree, you must agree to maintain and care for the tree with regular watering. You must not transplant, disturb or harm your tree. Mulch may not touch the tree and moors or string trimmers must not nick the tree. Unfortunately, your tree cannot be guaranteed. It may be replaced if, if it does not survive. Signed by the applicant. We have the applicant of when the tree was planted, the second tree was planted. Since then, a letter from the DPW superintendent was sent to. Was sent basically to report issues with boundaries in the city of Portland, please go to the city of Portland website. And he came up with miscellaneous information. Number seven was street trees. Street trees that may be potential hazard or pedestrian or a vehicle, vehicle or traffic. Please report a hazard to the DPW. DPW representative will come to location. Assess the issue with the tree. Please note per section two seventy-three, the tree ordinance of the city of Portland, all trees. Shrubs, bushes and all other woody vegetation on land lying between the sidewalk. And the street or otherwise within the right of way as measured from the center of the street are owned by the property owner. Upon which the land. The street is located. Jim Maloney, who's on my commission, added to that when we were at the meeting a couple, a couple of months ago. Please note that the remainder of section two seventy-three for further information on Portland's urban forest. So what he wrote was now the tree becomes the property owner's responsibility. My friend Diane Batsey, who's also on my commission, added to that by saying. She sent this letter to the DPW service and information letter to the residents. I feel that the language will encourage property owners to do whatever they wish for the right of way, including the planning without. Big safety rules, trimming and removal of any all or in all trees by not referring to residents through section code two seventy-three. Dash two seventeen, which describe what is, what is and not allowed for the city is making a big mistake. Because now the city resident can do whatever they want to do with the trees according to the letter from the superintendent from the DPW. This is a pamphlet that we put out years ago. Trees for Portland. It talks all about trees. Uh, why plant trees, Corlentree, Liligra, how to plant a tree, mulching, proper mulching of trees. Over the years, I've received many books from people in the city of Portland. Knowing what we do addressed to me. You all know what this book is. You've all heard of the Lorax. I've been referred to as the Lorax of the city of Portland by the guy that gave me this. He's an arborist for Naga Mohawk. He took care of all the eastern seaboard whenever there was a tree. I also got a tree from another resident, the giving tree. You should read this tree, this book. Tells you everything you want to know about cutting trees down and how you can use them as you're cutting them down. I also received. This is probably the one. A tree hurts two. People cut a tree down, they don't really think about. I watched them put that tree in the truck after they were done. I watched them pick up the stuff with a tree. Bucket truck. I was crying, okay? That's how much trees mean to me. Now I can go to my book of inventory. For the trees in the city of Portland and take away two trees that are no longer in existence in the city of Portland. That's in this book. We keep track of every tree that was planted. On a closing note. I didn't have any of the branches from the tree that was taken down. This is a branch that was pruned from an oak tree that's probably hundred and fifty to two years, two hundred years old at ninety pole Watson Street. My friends Helen and Ted Ackroyd. Took care of this tree like it was their baby. I was there when they trimmed it. This was a branch that they trimmed. They did a good job pruning it. I couldn't bring the tree that was destroyed because it's in the truck and it's in the dump. This is a branch of a tree. That was pruned properly and taken care of and it's still there. Two hundred years later. I only ask from now on, if you want a tree. Know what's going to happen with the tree when you take, don't take care of it. My final words are, and I'll be very brief, I'm sorry. I get a little wound up when I talk about my trees. I have served on this commission for twenty-five years, the past fifteen to twenty, of which I have served as chairman. I've enjoyed my time planting a one hundred trees, hundreds of trees, mostly in the city of Corlins right away, which have enriched the beauty of our urban forest. My time spent with my fellow commission members have been of extreme pleasure in getting to know many members. Of our community who share the same dedication in making Portland a great place to live and grow up. Although I may have been the face of the group of tree huggers, which we're called. I would especially like to thank my fellow commission member Diane Batsey. It is because of Diane's dedication, making sure the paperwork was filled and that the many grants were signed. And sent in a prompt manner to continue with the mission of tree plantings. I would also like to be remiss if I did not mention the name of Jim Maloney, arborist and lead forester for the National Grid. It is because of Jim's willingness to assist in growing our urban forests that I have continued to remain active on the commission. We have spent countless hours walking and pruning these trees in most need of help. Jim has been a countless advocate, friend to both me and the trees of Portland. I must also add that I have most recent. Most recently been disappointed that the city of Corlins was not able to provide money this year for tree planting. I do not feel that the L and D commission. Should have to ask for assistance to raise money to pay, pay for trees in the city of plantings. Right now we're finishing up an inventory, so now hopefully we'll be able to get a grant to be able to buy trees and not have to go out. And ask people for money to plant trees in the cities right away. The most satisfying aspect of my time spent serving on the tree commission. Will come from being able to walk the streets of Corlins. Where the knowledge of knowing the just hundreds of trees have been newly planted make Corlins a better place to live. We have also as a commission put Corlins on a Tree City USA map. For these past eighteen years, an accomplishment that I personally take the utmost pride in. I wish to inform you, Mr. Mayor, that I am submitting my resignation. From the Landscape and Design Commission effective upon completion of this year's plantings of the trees in the fall of twenty twenty-five. Thank you.
For anybody else for a privilege part and ask.
Let's stick with the reviews. You guys know what maple syrup is made? You tap tons of the trees and trickles down, goes into buckets and then you take those little buckets you put into a big one and boil it down. Well, AI recognition software and cameras works about the same way. We have all these cameras and they're taking live video feeds. And it's trickling down those live video feeds into a bucket. Hopefully that bucket is owned by the government agency. Sometimes they're put on cloud servers, which are not. And from there, let's say they're stored, they can be processed and we can get biometric data. Biometric data like people that use wheelchairs, people that have bicycles, people that use e-bike scooters. People that wear uh MAGA hats, people that wear uh rainbow flags, uh unaccompanied minors. That's a lot of information. Uh, and I want to ask the council, did you guys know? That approximately ten months ago, the cameras downtown were more retrofitted and plugged into an AI recognition software. I only found out about this. Once I had to ask my council member, my wonderful Troy Beckwith, who is the first to answer my call. And uh, at least at the time claimed to be just this ignorant shock of return by this revelation. And saying in his own words that the city can't afford another lawsuit right now. Then I spoke to Police Chief Barrera, who told me the police IT department agreement the project on a technical level. And that they are still in negotiations with the city over how to pay for this after the original grant war. I am an automation programmer analyst at SUNY Portland. I work in systems operation, security. I've worked in this industry for decades. I won't say that I'm an expert, but I would say that I know more than most. What he said raised so many red flags. One thing I told him, how are you guys going to pay for this? And I really wanted to hear the council's plan because. The markup, because you have to use their service. You cannot not have their service. So they know that negotiations. Regularly over twenty percent markup. How is the city going to pay for that? When I asked the mayor, he said five years was too far in the future to plan. Now, as someone that has a business economics degree from SUNY Portland. I know that you need to have at least a five-year plan to get money from the bank on a business that doesn't exist yet. So if you need to have a five-year plan for a business that doesn't exist, how are we running a city without being able to buy years in the future to plan to pay for things? Next question. Was a risk assessment done? This is an industry standard thing. When we are putting in live feeds of thousands of people into a. Uh, into a system, was a risk assessment done? When I asked the police chief this, he said, oh, what? And then when I said, when can I get it? He said, oh, I don't know until I can actually file it. All right, when are you going to file it? Oh, I'll file it tomorrow. Okay, so you're going to give me a call back tomorrow? Yes, ma'am. On Thursday, I called back because he hadn't responded within forty-eight hours. And I still haven't heard that. So when we talk about accountability and putting this kind of technology in hopes that people will use it responsibly. I am not given much hope. When I spoke to the mayor about what uh the chief had said, because I was very concerned. And I do want to go out of my way to say thank you to Mayor Steve for being out in the community and readily accessible. When I asked him about the IT department, he laughed. The police department doesn't have an IT. They contract out up to another private company. So a private company got to decide that another private company gets to have videos of me and my camera. And he omitted that about ten months ago. The systems had already been plugged in. Were you aware? Because he said that if there was any public record, it would be in the meetings from these meetings. And I have not found any records. So I really want to know, council, did you know about this? Who benefits when a private for company like Vercotta gains access to our biometric information, Portland residents? There is no way on a technical level for us to use their systems. And be able to not have them have access to our data. They can say that they won't, but. Did you know that Vercotta was, uh, let's see, oh. Meanwhile, Vercotta has a history of security failures. In twenty twenty-one hackers accessed over a hundred fifty thousand live camera feeds from Vercotta clients like us. Including hospitals, jails and schools. Exposing the company's inability to safeguard data. How did they respond to the FTCs uh looking at this? They lied. They said that they had hit the complaints. They did not. They were sued for five for over three million dollars. The mayor and the police chief say that they are fine with this. And have no qualms. Even the New York State Legislature has recognized the risk. Schools in New York State are prohibited from using facial recognition technology due to privacy and civil rights concerns. If it's not safe enough for our schools, why should it be forced on our entire downtown, which includes child heavy areas like the YWCA? Again, I want to reiterate that anyone can with access to these cameras, including the hackers that they've been shown unable to keep out. Will be able to find twelve to fourteen-year-old girls regularly unaccompanied by adults. Anyone that doesn't have a registered e-bike. And any nonwhite person out after sunset. I urge the council to frame this issue correctly. This is not about safety versus crime. This is about private corporate interest versus the constitutional rights of the public and democratic representation. Giving a corporation ownership of our biometric data even passively puts us in permanent lifelong risk. Of our personal identity information being sold or given to advertisers, data brokers and warrantless agencies. Like ICE, which has happened in Ithaca. Within the past few years. The Fourth Amendment right protects against unreasonable searches, yet we are being allowed twenty-four seven biometric surveillance of every resident, visitor and child in our downtown without difference sense. That includes the way you walk, what you wear, whom you're with, what kind of hat, whether you use a security, a safety device. That's a lot of information that advertisers and people trying to track you down might want. Which brings me to my call for action. Given everything I've said. And to in my time, I am asking the council to establish an independent surveillance oversight committee with the following powers. One, review and approve any surveillance technology contracts before they are finalized. Two, audit the use of existing surveillance technologies for civil rights violations, bodies or overreach on a regular basis. And with the full cooperation of the CPD contractors and service providers. Three, require regular public disclosure of how the data is stored, accessed and shared, including any third-party corporate access. Or additional security breaches. Four, be able to enforce penalties for violations. Without teeth, it means nothing. For example, being able to suspend the program for up to six months if cameras are used to monitor lawful protests or political gatherings. The people of Portland deserve safety, yes, but not at the expense of liberty, privacy and democracy. I urge you to act in defense of the community's rights and to ensure public oversight, not private profiteering. Governance, the future of our city. Thank you.
Anybody else for the privilege of the floor? Thank you. So the interest of time on the mayor's department, uh, not do my report, but I think it's important to, uh, if I could, that it's cheap. Cheap. I don't want to get, there are a lot of misnomers that have been spent during the, for these uh public laws that have been put out publicly. That aren't necessarily true. It creates some unnecessary. That aren't necessarily true. It creates some unnecessary uh, actions and unnecessary concerns. However, some concerns are valid. Therefore pages of, so, so this doesn't get to any further than that. Uh, does your chief could explain some of the camera stuff? Cause there's a lot of accuracy there that uh, I think are just important that they clarify.
In response to the concerns with the cameras, um, we've had cameras in the downtown area for decades. Um, our system was removed. During the construction project, we started doing some research. We looked at different companies. Uh, Verkata was a company that we looked to. We did know about the security breach in two thousand twenty-one and the response to that was. They actually were. Betted by the federal government because of their breach, um. The analytics that they have are not in any way race-based. They are.
Yeah.
I, I, I'd be happy to do that. Yeah, just, yeah, the, the analytics that we use are. A color of shirt, color of pants, um, and locationable. Sorry.
So people wearing red flags, for example?
No, no, they're, they're solid colors. They're, they're a search. In an ethical standpoint, the police department uses those for someone who committed in a crime, committed an offense. We can do a vehicle.
Where are they stored on government servers that we can actually foil?
Cause I don't finish, I don't explain the system and anything. I'll leave my question.
We use the analytics that are built into the system to search for. Criteria such as a hit and run motor vehicle crash where someone said a certain color vehicle was involved. We can search for that vehicle based on what our cameras show. Um, if a person steals from a store, we can use the storage surveillance, which is what we go to primarily, but if we think the person involved. Crossed the path of a camera that we have, we can locate that person. That's the degree of use that we haven't, to be honest with you, we haven't used those analytics frequently since they were imposed.
Why are we getting, why are we letting them have that information? Why aren't we using our own?
So let's talk about stories now.
Yeah, the, the, the storage that they have, when we use the devices, we archive a. Uh, a larceny or a car crash. That archive is what is stored. We save that.
Where?
We save.
Is it on a government computer that can't, that is subject to foil requests?
No, no, well, well, it's actually, it's actually. Stupes, twofold.
We cannot get foil requests on our information that they are getting if we are downtown, including our children.
Uh, everything that we collect becomes part of the court case. So it's, it's, it's hard drive. It's, it's stored on a, whether it be a USB thumb drive on our server. Or it's stored, stored on the cloud. Everything that is recorded is not stored in depth. It, it is not a system that does that, the, the storage, the storage and the cost of that, the astronaut.
Correct. That's why when I said the, what they do with the maple syrup, they, they boil that down and they keep that, the biometric details. And just because you guys aren't using it, doesn't mean that they don't have the capabilities. And also, like I said, the live feed going. I don't feel comfortable having a live feed of the YWCA because this company says, pretty please, I promise that we've learned our lesson.
The live feed is not in the provider.
Exactly. Take the live feed and they process it. And this is one part of the reason I'm so concerned is that it's an extreme. Misunderstanding of the technical understandings of this. Hasn't been any person that is not. Uh, does not have a private interest in this, that has a technical understanding. That has looked at this. I would say a private company telling you guys that it's okay to give another private company access to my information?
We made those choices.
Alright, so you chose to, as a private company. And then private company told you, oh yeah, sure, it's fine without doing any risk assessment. Again, an industry standard and you just said, okay. Is there?
We talked to the professionals in the industry. We looked at multiple.
Where?
Alright, I just, let's keep this under, again. The point is that, um, the data, the, the data is not. The data stored locally for thirty days, nobody can have access to that. But if somebody accesses.
We are notified if anyone accesses the system.
I still would insist on oversight committee given.
Understood, that's agreed. We talked about that.
Communication and clarity. And the fact that I've already had my child's information given to a private company.
What information?
Again, go to YWCA. I don't want you guys being, having a live feed. Means that they can see the information. Yes, it's.
I, I, I'm confused with the information.
I know you are. I'm sorry. We can talk more about this later if you'd like to have an actual technical conversation.
You, you're probably know more than I do, but.
Yes, I.
There, there is no live feed. Okay, so.
We cannot get the information without having a live.
There is no live theater. Us, thirty days, the only thing that gets off the radar is data that's for a case. Alright, moving on. So, uh, we'll go to more reports. Mr. Parker.
Well, had a positive note. We had a fun time at Ward one Sunday. Anyone who knows about Porch Fest. Each year, it's our tenth year and it's growing year by year. Um, I find it so pleasing to go to this, to see how people interact. It's a great community experience. And as a patrol officer, there's never incidents. It's how people want to act all the time. I'd like to give a quote that was in the paper. Um, most of this recognition goes to Molly Reagan, who started this, oversees it, plans it, does everything. She's awesome. And I like to quote her, it's just grown steadily every year, but it's not really about the growth of it, Reagan said. I don't care how big it grows. Just really enjoyable and a fun community building. It's a celebration of all the good things that we have going on in the courtroom, like culture of music here in our town. Sounds it up perfectly. I encourage you, if you've never been, to put it on your calendar next year in August. And it's how I would like to see all of us act all the time. Thank you.
You. So.
Now, the quiet, the second ward has been lovely. Heartbeaters are starting to creep back. So we're. Skirting our little wings for the first rowdy weekends of SUNY Corlin students coming back. Porch Fest was really wonderful. I want to give a shout out to Rosie Rosenbaum, who was a co-founder. Of Porch Fest. And that's it. So the second ward.
This slide. Um, I'd like to thank you for tabling. Those agenda items, obviously had to be done. Um, I attended Senator Schumer was in town to discuss social security. Uh, we met at CAPCO. And, and that was very interesting. I attended a DPW board meeting. The trees, there are three or four ash trees on Broadway which are dead. And I was assured again that they are on the list. They're now considered dangerous and they will be coming down. Um. The gentleman who spoke about crossing Tompkins Street. I've lived it for thirty-seven years. I know how hard it is to get across that street. Uh, the mayor and I have, and unfortunately it's a truck room. So it's not the city, it's New York State DOT. And we have tried different. Different things with New York State, different things that maybe could be done with Tompkins Street. And we have not been successful in that anything. Uh, the students come back this weekend, so traffic will. Will pick up, so be ready for that.
Be forward this, cause it'll be backed up.
Yeah, well, the, the good part is all the parents. Who have occasionally gone the wrong way on Main Street when they bring, they won't be going the wrong way. They'll all be going the right way. So that's it.
I saw people briefly, just one second. Thanks to Mr. Mayor. That was funny. I could go send the two of those issues that I know a lot of work went into proposals. So I do appreciate some added time to review things. Uh, I'll keep it brief beyond that. Um, there are some issues with uh, tree breeds outside of Garcia's. Being too small for the trees as they're growing. Uh, I reached out to uh, Mr. Rice on that, to follow up on that front. Uh, and I'll, I'll keep things brief here, given how long we've run up. But there's also some issues with Pablo and Frederick that were brought to my attention. As well as some streetlights uh, over the fifth quarter. They're out there. I'd love to chat aside about that.
Mr. Back.
Uh, real quick, uh, that one there, the, uh, Porch Fest. Not only, you know, they've always done a great job. It's always major to be that people will. Open up their property and houses for people to play at. It's just, it's, they are probably six, eight years on it, oh, and just. It's just great. Like to take it from them, but they do a great job. We'll leave it over there. Other than that, uh, I don't want to hear one more thing about being free than the point thing. I do, but you gotta remember. Better question, I would advise people to direct to act mayor, or the former mayor told me he was having made a set up. She's been addressed and obviously it wasn't, but we better that. Thanks, Ryan. It's all happy.
Mr. Michaels.
I had a, I had a brief meeting with uh, with our DPW regarding the uh. Ward watch that we had and the items that were, were noted during the war. Uh, DPW does have the list. They have started working on it at this point, but they plan on getting to it. Uh, once, uh, once their uh, uh, job, uh. But uh, that's a diminished, we get it to fall a little bit. Uh, regarding solicitors, uh, knocking on your door. Uh, you have the right as individuals to ask for identification. Uh, these solicitors should be registered through our city hall. If they are not, then uh, I would certainly uh, send them on their way. And you certainly have the right to call police department and have them investigated regarding why they're knocking on doors. Especially those that are asking for money. I just want to bring this to your attention, uh, for those that aren't aware of this. Also attended the CAPCO visit since uh, Mr. Lane had noted. Uh, with Senator Schumer on social security, a very well-attended event. It's always nice to see the senator come to town. Uh, also attended the uh, Lake House uh, canvas ribbon cutting. Uh, it was a well-attended event as well. I just want to let you know, I just participated in the ribbon cutting. But uh, they certainly have a, uh, well-established, uh. I, I guess, uh. Building, so to speak, yeah, uh, well-secured. And uh.
Or Max.
And yes, it is.
Yeah.
And it's nice to have another business at that end of town, especially in that mall. And I understand there's another one on its way. Uh, coming shortly, so it's nice to uh, see new businesses, especially that end of town. And uh, that's all I have for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. For a little minutes. I'm going to get a chance to do a little minutes.
If I wasn't here last night, I would have been thinking.
Anybody else can make a motion? My slang, Burger. Any questions? All of the favors? Agenda item number one, adopt the global law, update city traffic regulation to flat two-way, hence we have.
Resolved that the city of Portland Common Council does hereby adopt the following amendment to chapter eleven of the city code relating to vehicles and traffic. Uh, to be, with the designated as local law number two of the year two thousand point five.
Anybody have any questions on this one?
Um, hold on a little quickly. Go back. We've played.
It's almost. The city.
So the, the texts of the local laws are not included there in the agenda itself. They're included as attachments.
I guess where I'm going with this is it has anything to do with anything else that's going on here tonight? Uh, this is just the right hand. Turns on nature. Okay.
Councilmember Burger.
Hi.
Councilmember Sullivan.
I'm.
Councilmember Lane.
I.
Councilmember Conlon.
Hi.
Councilmember Beckwith.
Hi.
Councilmember Michaels.
Hi.
Uh, can I get a motion to uh, re-rule agenda item two and item, and item, and item number three, a rule set process over for. Slaying. So all of the, uh, for, this is to go for moving agenda item two and.
Councilmember Burger.
Hi.
Councilmember Sullivan.
Hi.
Councilmember Lane.
Hi.
Councilmember Conlon.
Hi.
Councilmember Beckwith.
Hi.
Councilmember Michaels.
Hi.
Agenda item number four, adopt proposal of the law related to fire department cost recovery fees.
Resolved that the city of Portland County Council does hereby adopt the following amendment to local law number six of two thousand twenty-three designated as section two forty-five of the city code. Leading to fire department cost recovery fees, uh, to be designated now as local law number three, two thousand twenty-five.
Motion.
Yes.
Yep. Back with, Mr. Solomon. Any questions on this one?
Yeah.
Can I always please?
Councilmember Burger.
Hi.
Councilmember Sullivan.
I.
Councilmember Lane.
Hi.
Councilmember Conlon.
Hi.
Councilmember Beckwith.
Hi.
Councilmember Michaels.
Hi.
Mr. Randall. Mr. Sorry. Here, uh. Do we need, is this, is there anything else in this local law that this hearing for the next one that we're going to need to set? Some of the fees that were in this one, is there any other fees?
Yeah, it's, it's, it's actually going through and pulling all the fees out of the code and utilizing these kinds of ones. So it deals with everything except events that were asked to. Yeah, so we can still proceed with those.
Okay. So, um, agenda item number five, set September second, twenty twenty-five, public hearing for proposal of the law to allow the common council to set. City permit, license, and other fees by resolution.
Resolved that pursuant to section twenty of the municipal home rule of the state of New York. A public hearing on a proposal of the law to allow the common council to set city permit, license, and other fees. By resolution shall be held on September second, two thousand twenty-five at six P M at city hall, twenty-five Port Street, Portland, New York.
There was a motion, Mr. Conlon, Mr. Beckwith. Any other questions? And we'll please.
Councilmember Burger.
Hi.
Councilmember Sullivan.
Hi.
Councilmember Lane.
Hi.
Councilmember Conlon. Member Beckwith.
Hey.
Councilmember Michaels.
Hi.
Set September second, twenty twenty-five, public hearing on the city of Portland's community development needs. And to discuss the possible submission of one or more community development block grant C G applications for the twenty twelve. By program here, so I said.
Uh, twenty twenty-five, right?
Okay.
Resolved that the city of Portland Common Council does hereby set a public hearing on September second, two thousand twenty-five at six P M at city hall, twenty-five Port Street, Portland, New York. For the purpose of hearing public comments on the city of Portland's community development needs. And to discuss the possible submission of one or more community development block grant applications for the two thousand twenty-five program year.
Motion. Mr. Parker, Mr. Beckwith. Questions? Please.
Councilmember Burger.
Hi.
Councilmember Sullivan.
Hi.
Councilmember Lane.
Hi.
Councilmember Conlon.
Hi.
Councilmember Beckwith.
Hi.
Councilmember Michaels.
Hi.
Agenda item number seven, offer to the city and to contracts with artists for downtown revitalization art installations.
Resolved that the city of Portland County Council hereby authorizes Mayor Steve to enter into contracts with Porch from Land Studios LLC. Vaughn Randall. Uh, and Maxwell MKs for the purpose of creating and installing public sculptures on Main Street. In an amount not to exceed ninety thousand dollars.
Sullivan, Beckwith. Mr. Roll Hill, you want to make a presentation? I don't know if they have other art effort.
We have tried for a few members here.
Thank you guys for sticking it out.
Yes.
It was a long thing to do that, but uh, so uh, I'm going to have Mr. Roll Hill in there. Many people that have appeared that did a great job and I appreciate their attention to detail and their input to understand. They can make some comments on some of the items, the, that are Friday show. Some of the art projects presented and once, uh, we. We, you guys might come up. Well, these are some of our resonant talents that we have to do that, if you don't mind stepping up front, they can kind of give a overview of what they are. So there's basically three spaces. A part of the D R I project is to have art fused into, uh, our downtown. So we put out our, our M P to try to get a bunch of, uh, designs to come in. Unfortunately, we're against local designs, some great, uh, I think a great selection fit different areas within the city and, um, as the council can get a, that you can just review some of these, some of the projections.
Well, good evening, Steve, council members. Thanks for giving us a bit of your time this evening. Uh, what you see before us, uh, really is, I think, the culmination of the D R I project. Certainly, we saw the infrastructure work. We've seen the streetscape work and this really is intended to be, I think, the one of the crowning focal points. Just like to take a moment to introduce the art committee members. Uh, got Emily Givens here, Crystal Lyon and Scott Oldfield. Uh, not here this evening, uh, unfortunately, is Molly Reagan, uh, who also participated in this process. Uh, I believe Crystal, Scott, I, I think all of you really were, were in at the ground level back in twenty, twenty seventeen. Yeah, and so it's been, it's been a bit of a process. I don't know if you want to speak to that, Crystal?
Um, so, um, I'm a creative advocate. I'm, I'm from Portland. I walked away, came back. Um, and just really wanted to use what I've learned, what I experienced, especially through the arts and now as an arts educator to help cultivate the city that I would have wanted to live in when I was growing up here. Um, so I thought it was very important to advocate for not only bringing art into our community, but also to celebrate and elevate the art artists and creatives that are in our community. Um, to help with, uh, not only, uh, you know, elevate our culture, to create a sense of, um, belonging in our community. But also, um, to really bring our, uh, community together and to celebrate, uh, who we really are, um, as a whole.
Got, anything to add on that? So to that end, we started a process, um, well, again, the process started in earnest back in about twenty eighteen. Uh, it was, uh, paused like all of the project, uh, due to the COVID pandemic. Uh, about twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, the process was restarted again. Uh, during that review, the city reached out to the city of Watertown, which was also a D R I community. And, uh, did some research on their, uh, art process and, uh, the outreach that they use to recruit artists. Uh, we took a look at their, uh, R F P and the processes they used. Um, moving forward, as we worked with the engineers to, uh, give us the streetscape locations for the actual art pieces. Um, it was decided that sculpture was the direction we would go in, in part because the city doesn't have a lot of uh, viable landscape downtown for the installation of murals, so the focus switched to sculpture. And working with the New York State Department of State, which is the oversight agency for the D R I, uh, art portion of this project, it was recommended that we take a look at the Auburn, uh, D R I art process as they had also gone through, uh, their, their recruitment and outreach. And so we did just that. We reached out to the Auburn, uh, benefit improvement district to, uh, utilize, uh, the R F Q that they had, uh, adapted, which was, uh, recommended by the, the state. And so back in March, uh, we released that R F Q. We received ten submissions. Some of them were local, some of them were regional, and some of them were from, uh, out of state. Uh, upon, uh, the review with the art commission of those ten submissions, it was winnowed down to, uh, excuse me, we winnowed the ten down to five. Then we reached back out to those artists to, uh, ask them to submit their Portland-specific projects. They had just really submitted their prior works, a general, you know, background. And so, uh, those five resubmitted, we then narrowed that down to three finalists. Uh, two of them are local, uh, as you will read in your packet, and then, uh, one gentleman is from Chicago, Illinois. Now you'll say, why am I seeing, uh, four different panels in front of me this evening when in fact we are only authorizing three contracts? Uh, last week, the, uh, arts committee, well, I should say, the arts committee has done finalist interviews with all three of the, uh, proposed awardees. And, uh, based on some feedback from the arts committee, uh, we reached out to Maxwell MKs and, and asked if he would be willing to, uh, consider, you know, just taking some constructive feedback, and he was very receptive to that. So what you see in front of you are Maxwell's, uh, two revised submissions, which really are, are just minor uh, tweaks on his original, uh, proposal. What we, uh, based on, again, some feedback from the arts committee, uh, what's referred to as, uh, proposal two uh, of the, uh, of the interwoven, give the correct language here, it's speaking. Uh, woven wheels. So this concept reflects on Portland's industrial legacy, honoring the Rockaway Motor Company and the Wickwire Brothers. Uh, central to the piece is the circular pattern symbolizing the history of wire manufacturing. The interlocking form suggests strength, precision, and progress, equating both mechanical design and woven materials. As the pattern shift and evolve, they represent the city's ongoing transformation. This piece also highlights communal bonds and forward momentum.
That's the one.
Uh, this would be the one right here closest to, um.
Thank you.
So that location would be.
Uh, this piece would be proposed to be installed, uh, at the, um, what would be in front of, or between the former Portland Standard Building and the, um, the dark horse. So we have three specific locations that were identified as part of the streetscape development process with the D R I. Uh, there are pads already installed that have been reinforced to support the installation sculpture. Uh, the.
There's research about the lighting.
Yes, sir. Uh, so this piece, actually all three pieces, uh, will have, uh, internal illumination installed. We will be adding, uh, once we get the final lumens required, uh, from the individual artists. Each piece, uh, will be, uh, internally or backlit. Um, the LED lighting will be, uh, able to change with the seasons, with various, uh, events going on. Perhaps this weekend, if these pieces were in place, we'd be lighting them in red to welcome our friends, uh, at Sunita, back to town and obviously with St. Patrick's Day, one of the favorites, that sort of thing. Um, the piece that you were referring to on the end, uh, Alden Solomon, is, uh, from local artist Vaughn Randall. Uh, this is called Lotus. This concept draws from Portland's identity as a former industrial hub. Uh, locus, uh, meaning a place or focal point in Latin. It's a flywheel intended to evoke stored energy, potential, and momentum, all metaphors for the city's industrial legacy and forward movement. Portland is known as the crown city, and this work nods to that title in a symbolic, non-literal way. The flywheel circular form takes on the appearance of a crown, which is an emblem of Portland's significance, dignity, and endurance.
And where are we just going?
Uh, that particular piece is slated to be installed in front of, uh, number one Main Street. Um, on the corner of, uh, almost the corner of Clinton Ave and Main Street, so it'd be across the street from the community.
Enough room.
The, uh, the final piece, uh, from one of our other local artists, uh, and this is from, uh, Ash Marsh, forged from Ash Studios, uh, again, here in Portland. This piece is called Portland Through Time. And this work is designed to be a landmark celebrating preserving Portland's rich heritage through detailed mosaic panels. This four-sided obelisk will honor the city's past, reflect its present, and inspire its future. And what is not really called out well in, in this sketch, but I'm really excited about, is there will be, um, uh, a crown in, uh, in like a lucite material on the top of that obelisk, but again, at night will be, uh, underlit. And so again, will create a, a feature. These panels, as, as, uh, Ash outlines in her proposal, will on the north and south sides have historic photography of downtown. On the east and west side, she's looking to work with local artists to be able to, uh, create art that then can be installed on this. This, this piece is intended to, uh, live and evolve and continue to, you know, really highlight the local arts community. Uh, and again, serve as, uh, as a, a call to downtown for artists to, uh, be able to showcase their work and for folks to be able to take that in. So, uh, that piece in particular really has, uh, in my opinion, a nice shelf life. And, you know, with this, and, and I, I'll let the mayor speak first of that. The goal here is really to continue to evolve these installations as time goes on. And, and I think we as a city want to continue working on how to enhance arts in our downtown, uh, to continue making it a destination and continue finding resources for local, regional, or, or national artists to be able to create their work and bring that to our city. Uh, certainly, um, you know, we're starting to see more and more mural work downtown. The mural by, uh, Niko Kathgarth has really, I think, caught everybody's attention at, uh, One North Main Street. And I think, uh, what's been born out of this conversation around art and D R I is how do we continue this momentum forward and how do we continue to, uh, support local artists and, and really bring public art into the forefront?
To that location.
Uh, the final location, I'm sorry, so, uh, the Martin, Ash Martin piece forged from Ash will be located in front of Ritz at the corner of, uh, West Court in Maine. And certainly, if anybody has any questions for the art committee or anything else we can, uh, answer for you, uh, I would point out that we do have a bit of a deadline that somewhat drove our process. Um, you know, D R I is, uh, is slated to be wrapped up at the end of this year. And so we, uh, we endeavored to move fairly quickly again to, but we wanted to make sure we had a good product at the end of it. It wasn't just about checking boxes. It was now, uh, making sure that we had something the community can, can really proud of.
And only one question I have would be the one on, uh, Tappan Street and Main Street. How close the intersection is at and has it been approved by the state?
So all of, uh, the, the street design was vetted by the New York State D O T. The locations were, again, part of the, the D R I design process. Uh, we've limited the height to twelve feet and, uh, without having this back in front of me.
No, that's fine. That's why I'm making, because you're going to get posted state intersection. There's a lot of things to come in play, especially with the lighting and the height.
That's absolutely, yeah.
Were all these sites already, uh, electric to them?
Here, I guess.
Which one is the wheel one again?
Uh, so I think you might be referring to Vaughn's piece, the, uh, locus.
Yeah, that one's the wheel one, right?
Yes, okay, just making sure. I thought someone was referring to the one. So the, uh, this piece right here, again, does, uh, recognize if you look at the, uh, round links in it, it's a nod to the, uh, Wickwire, um, you know, screen weaving and, and chain weaving.
Within.
Very.
There's, actually, it's cut out, so things are cut out. The shapes, tradition. Anybody else have any other questions? Yeah, I want to thank you guys for your input, help.
Personally, I like.
Not an artist, yes, yes.
Thank you, our committee.
Yeah, so I, uh, what's great about this art is that we can change it, roll them later, like the interactive panels and the local art, artwork, which is great to have a local artist that was able to put in a great, such a great submission. We're excited about that. We're excited about creating other, or grants. So we're keeping up with you guys in the future. To go on with this great thing, we have music and arts. We've heard about some of the music tonight. We have great talent in our community. They want this out on that, it's a, that, that demonstration. I want you guys to decide to make this happen. Can't wait to, uh, like each one of them one at a time with you guys. I thank you for all you put into it. And thank you, Mr. Roll Hill, for your help.
Yes, yes.
Thank you. All right, thank you very much. All right, moves to the motion, please.
Councilmember Merker.
Aye.
Councilmember Sullivan.
Aye.
Councilmember Lane.
Aye.
Councilmember Conlon.
Aye.
Councilmember Beckwith.
Aye.
Councilmember Michaels.
Agenda under item number eight, approve special event permits for C A R E care. Recovery picnic at Suggit Park, September sixth, twenty twenty-five.
Resolved that the city of Portland county council does hereby approve permits as described below for issuance by the city clerk, condition on fulfillment of applicable state and local code requirements. The event is the, uh, Care Recovery Picnic, uh, sponsored by the Portland Area Recovery Empowerment and, uh, Access Independence, to be held September sixth from two to four P M at the Suggit, uh, Park Birch Building and issuing a special event permit and sound device permit without fee.
Motion. I saw them, Michaels. Any questions? That's all, please.
Councilmember Merker.
Aye.
Councilmember Sullivan.
Aye.
Councilmember Lane.
Aye.
Councilmember Conlon.
Aye.
Councilmember Beckwith. Councilmember Michaels.
Agenda item number nine, approve special event permits for Dan and Fatsy. Services, passion to action event for the housing insecure at Courthouse Park, September nineteenth.
Resolved that the city of Portland county council does hereby approve permits as described below for issuance by the city clerk, condition on fulfillment of applicable state and local code requirements. The event is compassion to action, an event for the housing insecure, uh, being sponsored by Family and Children's Housing Services, to be held September nineteenth, two thousand twenty-five, from two to four P M in Courthouse Park, issuing a special event permit and sound device permit without fee.
Slane. Um, Mister Conlon, any questions? Yeah, all the place.
Councilmember Merker.
Aye.
Councilmember Sullivan.
Aye.
Councilmember Lane.
Aye.
Councilmember Conlon.
Aye.
Councilmember Beckwith.
Hey.
Councilmember Michaels.
Aye.
Agenda item number ten, authorize over hire for one wastewater treatment plant operator through December thirty-first, point five.
Resolved that the city of Portland county council grants authority to hire one additional wastewater treatment plant operator, one, above their authorized staffing levels to lessen the impact of staffing shortages based upon recent retirements. Be further resolved that said authority is granted to the extent of such positions that have been funded in the department's budget shall expire on December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-five.
Motion, Mr. Solomon. Mr. Michaels. Any questions?
Just a little background on the necessity of this.
Just, do you want, do you want to state, do you want to comment on this, uh? Wastewater.
Oh, no, this just has to, uh, do with the, with the two retirements we've had, who are promoting people from within. Uh, but while they're working at getting up to speed before they actually are promoted into those management positions, uh, we won't have an opening to hire behind them, uh, as they're going up. So this just gives us the time to get everybody trained up to the right level to be able to step into those new management positions. Uh, it is within the budget, uh, so that won't be a problem. And it just gives the flexibility for us to make sure we have enough hands as everybody's, uh, working into their.
That helps, yes. Everybody else? Thank you. Call, please.
Councilmember Merker.
Aye.
Councilmember Stol, uh, Sullivan.
Aye.
Councilmember Lane.
Aye.
Councilmember Conlon.
Aye.
Councilmember Beckwith.
Aye.
Councilmember Michaels.
Aye.
Agenda items number eleven, authorize the final award of micro enterprise assistant program funds under community development block grant number two eighty-five and two six four dash twenty-four.
So I'll read from where as the city C D B G program review committee has recommended the following applicant for funding under the micro enterprise program. Area fifty-one, doing business as the pros nest, located one sixty-eight Clinton Ave. Uh, has been awarded thirteen thousand two hundred and sixty-two dollars from the micro enterprise program for the purchase of furniture and fixtures, uh, supplies and inventory, computer technology and software. Now therefore be it resolved that the county council of the city Portland does hereby award uh, micro enterprise grant to the above listed applicant contingent upon the execution of a grant agreement in compliance with all applicable program and regulatory requirements. And be it further resolved, the mayor Steve or their destiny is authorized to execute all necessary agreements, certifications, documentations required to implement and administer the awards. Be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution, uh, shall be filed with the city clerk and made available for public inspection.
I get a motion, Solomon. Uh, so you, uh, previous council awarded this same person and he's grown from a flat tower, you're on it. In February, so it's a great successful program, um, and we'll have to work together to, uh, some of the federal, uh, the I use the strong word here, attack, have been towards the C D B G money, so we're have to get together on a lot of the effort to, uh, to, to stop those issues. It's a, it's a big hit to us, would be a big disaster to us. So, um, when Congressman, uh, Manion was in town last week, it was Senator Schumer, those are both conversations I had, the both of them to uh, team up together and by part is an effort to, to push back against these, um, cuts and tax, if you will, that are, will hurt. Anything like ours. So we put together some good, uh, programming points and maybe more to that, uh, as well as our ribbon cutting, uh, ladder jump. By the first week of September, I believe, is, uh, there's also an event to, uh, celebrate sign uh, this Friday at the Hink Park at ten thirty. So I encourage everybody to go to that as well, recognizing the payments for their donations to our park down there as well as the signage that area, and the signage that's going to come to the rest of the city.
That's it. Ten thirty.
On Friday.
Friday. Well, hey. Yeah. What, what type of?
Uh, he does a bunch of different things. He does some plastic moldings, uh, like, uh, uh, cutting outs and, um, gaining cards. Cutting out some gaining cards and smothering products that he has. Press portion building. Many great successful businesses in that area.
Councilmember Merker, councilmember Sullivan, councilmember Lane, councilmember Codlin, councilmember Beckwith, councilmember Michaels.
Okay, before we adjourn, again, I appreciate everybody's input and it's always good to have that. Back as well dispelled. Sorry, I'm getting more building on it. Respectfully. Get rid of something on this elders and this is public education. This items cleared up to make sense to people. Listen to those supports and missions that are necessary. Make that happen. So again, I appreciate everybody's patience and make this happen. It's a lot of these. Right, motion to adjourn.
I'm stuck in that.